Um, roll call please.
I will do roll call with city council first followed by planning commission. Council member Alcatraz.
Here.
Council member Eugenia.
Here.
Council member Tucker.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Berner.
Here.
Mayor Dale.
Here.
Followed by planning commissioner, planning commission, sorry, Commissioner Mendoza. Commissioner Rivera.
Here.
Vice Chair Harpy.
Here.
Chairman Hammerness.
Here.
And Commissioner Rabbati is absent for the record. So I do spot her. Retract that Commissioner Rabbati this present.
Okay, um, we're heading to move on to B one. Uh, subject Victoria Trazas Mayfield subdivision, street parking. Oh, gosh, we didn't have him on there. Please stand for the pledge, please.
Ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of forty six. One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
No, okay. My apologies. We do recognize our country here in Imperial. I just needed the mayor pro Tim to check me up a little bit. So anyway, then we'll move on to B one. Uh, Victoria Trazas Mayfield subdivision, street parking.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, uh, council, planning commissioners, Dennis, Marita, city manager. Uh, want to thank you all for attending and thank those of you in the audience for attending. Um, I'll start by stating the obvious. We all know why we're here. There's concerns that have been raised about, uh, the parking or the lack thereof in the, uh, Victoria Trazas. Uh, Trazas subdivision. I will say just for ten seconds of history. The project, uh, has been built, uh, in accordance with plans approved many years ago. Uh, based upon applications made by, uh, the then owner of the property. Uh, so, uh, whether it's the city, uh, the developer or purchasers. Uh, in my view, uh, we've all benefited by this project. Uh, we can, we can Monday morning quarterback the approvals, uh, and decisions that, uh, were made. Uh, and but I hope that we can keep our eye on the ball as to why we're here, uh, this evening. Uh, we can't change history, uh, but I think we can, uh, working together arrive at, uh, some solutions. Hopefully, uh, won't be perfect. I mean, because the s- street can be made wider, the driveways can be made longer. So there are some things that are kind of fixed, uh, and, and we have to take those things into account as we, as we move forward. Uh, I, I, and I would say all the solutions on the table, we've all heard many of them already. Uh, I mean, uh, all the way from maintaining the status quo to abandoning sidewalks and things like that. So I, I, and, and there are obviously impacts, potential impacts associated with all, with all of those. Um, uh, so, um, what you will be presented with this evening are, are some, uh, suggestions. Uh, and, and comments that, uh, uh, that we had amongst ourselves. And I think some from, uh, residents. Uh, so, uh, I, I think just, I want to end with, you know, we can, we can all be victims. I prefer to think that none of us, uh, are, are victims. And I, and I look forward to a constructive conversation this evening about how we can move this issue forward. And arrive at, uh, uh, the best solution that is available to us. So I think the intention, uh, this evening would be, uh, I think, uh, staff has prepared some maps. Uh, and some overlays that I, that I hope will at least get the discussion started. Uh, as to some of the things, uh, that are, that are being looked at.
With that, then we'll go ahead and move to staff. And as soon as we're done with the presentation, then, uh, if anyone has any, um, questions or comments and stuff, just, uh, please address it at that time, okay? Uh, Mo Thel, go ahead and take over, sir.
Um, if I may, I T. So this is the, uh, project location of the entire area that we were talking about. Um, the, um, the concern in question, it relates to Saddleback Drive in Meadowbrook, Meadowbrook Drive. And if we go to the next slide. This is one of the, um, existing, this is the existing configuration of, of the street. If you can zoom in a little bit in the middle of the, of the, uh, of the road. Uh, we have some parking spots. We looked at, uh, uh, different ways to see if we could, we're, um, be able to, um, add more parking spaces at that location. So as currently sits, we have total of twenty four, uh, parking spaces. We changed it to a diagonal parking, but that will eliminate almost half of those parking spaces. So we don't have, um, enough space at that location to add more space, to, to add more parking spaces. Um, the, if you zoom in on saddle back, um, a little bit to the right. So one of the things that we looked at in, in, is the, uh, to allow parking on one side of the street. And, and have a no parking red curve on the west side of the street. And the intention is to, uh, it's because of the, uh, fire hydrants that we have at the west side of the street. And, and we'll leave it as this, there's no parking. Um, but on the east side of it, uh, we allowed a nine foot, um, buffer to allow for parking. Now, in between the homes, we can only have a nine by twenty, uh, parking space. So it'll be, um, very, very tight. If you have a long bed truck, uh, of course, you're not going to be able to fit it. Uh, but you, you know, it, it would allow you, at least on that street, to add at least, um, eight parking spaces if we want to go that route. Um, there's other issues that we can look at and, and we can add, um, the, um, parking on the Green Valley, uh, way as well. Um, so these are the options, um, that staff has talked that for your review.
And open it up to, uh, questions and comments, if you will, come to the dais and then state your name and record for. Records. Go ahead.
Good evening.
Good evening, Charlene Wyatt. I live on Meadowbrook Drive. In regards to the parking on the streets, if you want, if you're choosing to add parking spaces on Saddleback Drive on the actual main street. It's going to be impossible. Just having our trash cans on trash day out on the street to back out of our driveways, it's a mission. So adding a vehicle there, it's not going to be doable, to be honest, because we live there. We're the ones that know it's not going to be doable to add a parking space on the street. And also on the side street, um, I don't know what the side street is called. I couldn't see it. No, that one actually, um, I see parking there, but I don't know if that empty lot is going to be filled with houses that are for the low income. So once those houses are built, those are their parking spaces. So there's no way that we would be able to have it. Off of second, you're, you're saying you have nine parking spaces on each block? Look at all the homes that are there. Who's going to be able to park there? So it, it's, I, I, I mean, I don't think it's a good idea, to be honest. It's not going to be fair to all of us that live in that community when there's a total of eighteen parkings on that street.
Excuse me, um, so what would you suggest we do?
I mean, I don't know, but I know for sure this is not a good suggestion.
Yeah, I'm looking for trying to find an answer.
Because as it is, those parking spaces are already taken up by the time we get home from work. So those of us who get off at five P M., we don't, we can't park on the side streets. And I mean, we're going to have to walk a block and a half to go home after work. You're tired, you know, you're exhausted and you're going to have to walk a block and a half to, just to get to your house. And that's if you're lucky to get a parking space. I mean, the county ordinance is a twenty foot driveway, nine feet, uh, wide. How did it pass inspection? Our driveways are fifteen feet. Five, uh, twenty feet if you include the sidewalk. So how is that even possible? I mean, I get it, I agree, like, you know, sometime, I guess, some people were saying that they were told that they were getting a fifteen foot driveway. I was never told that. That wasn't part of my, um, contract. I'm sorry, I'm getting a little emotional. That wasn't part of my contract. And I mean, some of us are first time homeowners. You're not looking to see if your vehicle's going to fit in your driveway? You're looking to see when you do the walk through, you're looking just to see if you're built, your house was built correctly. And I mean, taking this drive, I mean, we're, we weren't never thinking we're going to have these issues for parking. How is that fair to us?
Thank you.
Hey, my name is Irene Espinoza. I reside, um, on Meadowbrook as well. And just looking at, and just to piggyback off of what our neighbor was saying. I think one of the issues that you're looking at is just not citing people for parking in their own driveways. That's one of the biggest solutions, yes.
Okay. But if you're blocking the driveway, what if you're out walking your kids and you have a stroller? And you happen, you have to go around a truck and get in the street and somebody runs in over you, God forbid. But then, then what do you do? I mean, so each, we're just trying to come up with a solution.
Correct, we all have children here and we have walked the streets and we have walked around areas right there in consideration. And we don't, honestly, we're lucky enough to not have that issue right now where we have people that are driving recklessly around. Because in this community, we're lucky enough to have people talking to each other and we know each other. So yeah, and then also when we are getting off of work late, I'm one of those people. I'm getting home after six o'clock at night, I have my four year old child. I don't want to have to walk down, you know, a long way to get him in, especially if it's already hot, humid, muggy. He's tired, I'm tired, we're carrying stuff, groceries and so on and what, and so on and so forth, so. And again, to say those parkings are already taken up, um, a lot of times by the time we get home. So that's one of the issues that we're looking at as well. So I understand the safety that you guys are talking about. We are aware of that as well, but we have to think about ourselves and our families. And we have our cars parked there and a lot of them are going over, yes. Well, the first one is not to cite anybody until the developers can figure something out better than offering parking that's already being taken.
The, uh, staff person, I'm sorry. It said he offered walking off one side in red and just providing for, uh, the east side for parking. But there's not enough space for the number of houses that are on that particular area of the street. So, um, I've heard something about doing a one-way driving, okay? One-way driving, so that means you won't have traffic coming opposite. Is there enough room where they could park on both sides, but just the young ones?
Uh, we don't see that happening. There's a very narrow area in between there. Plus, there's only, the exit and entrance is only coming out of our community. There's only one way in and out, there's nothing else. Around there, you have streets, but as you're coming out, there's only one way in and out. That we've seen on second street.
About saddleback and middle drive being one way.
Yeah, and, and the, uh, what's being, that's an option here was being shown on, on the screen. Um, that's what it is, it's a one-way, um, parking on one side, just to add additional parking to.
Okay, and the, and the traffic would flow only in one way.
Uh, one way, correct.
Have two ways.
Yes.
Okay, so, um.
Oh, actually ma'am, I have a question for you, so don't sit down yet. You can stand up there with her, dude, that's okay.
Guards, so the one way, um, there's no way two cars fit on our, on our road. It's too narrow. So the street is too narrow. You can't have two cars passing at the same time. So if there's a vehicle already parked there, you won't fit, you'd be driving on the sidewalk.
What is the distance from sidewalk to sidewalk?
Uh, we have twenty-four feet. So, um, on what's being proposed is a nine by twenty on the, on the east side. And that will leave you, um, um, around twelve feet, uh, for one vehicle going one way.
Come home. Some reason why you don't park in your garage?
Because we use the garage for other reasons. And we have three to four vehicles as well. We have three drivers with four cars. It's a four bedroom house. We have three adults in the home. Each one of us have things that we do throughout the day, whether it's work, school, running errands, taking our children to school. So we cannot fit all those vehicles into the garage.
Oh, but you could fit one or two, I mean, it's.
But not only that, wouldn't, wouldn't our driveway be our property where we can actually drive, like, park our vehicles in? So even if we choose to use our garage for other reasons, it's not an excuse not to be able to park in our driveway.
Um, I, I believe the original plan is two thousand eight.
Original plan was back in oh four or five.
Oh, okay.
And then the amendment to allow a planned unit development, uh, was in two thousand and seven, to allow this type of development.
Just, just from a helicopter view. But, um, this is just my observation. One, back in two thousand four, we didn't have the large vehicles, okay? That involved time. Second of all, people, two, three, four. Plan was maybe two when they laid it out. That's not saying, okay, you're going to buy this house, but you're restricted to two vehicles. I seriously doubt the contract. Third, um, with respect to other stuff in people's garage other than a car. Um, I think that's a choice by the person who lives there. And I, as the person who lives here as a citizen, I don't think I would want to have to pick up somebody else's choice that they want to. Put things in their garage other than a vehicle. And that's just my opinion. I don't, I don't think that's the reason why, uh, things have to be changed because of someone's choice and how they want to store their things. Because there are storage facilities that you can pay rent for, okay? And everybody's got budgets, everybody in this room, okay?
Hi, guys, doing, my name's Zed Gonzalez, I reside on Meadowbrook as well. Um, so I guess, I get, the ladies already explained exactly what the issue is. Um, Mr. Mora, uh, we spoke on the day the issue happened and I brought up a few issue that. That I thought could be resided just simply with leaving those two streets exempt. Like what about the fact that they're possibly a one-way street? I don't think that'd be safe in a sense of the possibility of fire or E M S trying to get through, if should it be needed. My concern is. That right now, yes, the area is fine, it's safe, it's calm, it's quiet. But who's to say, God forbid, ever happens to somebody decides to want to do something and my wife has to park a block, a block away. Has to walk with my daughter, you know, um. I personally do believe that. I've read the code and it specifically states, you know, no blocking the public walkway easement. But it says it can be blocked through. Can't be quoted, it said in a lawful manner. So my question would be, what would you guys consider lawful? Because we're lawfully parking on our driveway and it's unfortunate that, um, as you stated, the driveways aren't big enough and we could park in our garage. Unfortunately, we don't have that option. There's a, we're a family of six. We have four children. I have a regular Chevy truck. My wife has a Jeep. Our cars, it's, wouldn't be safe for us to put it inside the garage if we even wanted to. It's really, really tight, even if we want to put one. Um, for example, what I wanted to bring up was I believe in El Centro off Vine Street, they've left them alone. They have to park halfway on the street, I don't know if you have noticed Vine and Fifth, if you guys are aware of that street at all. That's, that's a really tight street. And they've been pretty much left alone. I'm asking that, we pretty much just leave those two streets exempt. You guys stated that this was built or accepted back in oh four or oh five. Obviously, going forward, we learn from our mistakes and we just don't let any more properties be built like this. And we just live our life. Um, there was, that was a comment made, what would you do? You know, someone wants to walk around, well. We, we, we go for walks in the evening time with my family. We walk alongside, everybody's calm, everybody knows each other, but we don't have that issue with people driving up and down wildly. And that's, that's what I wanted to give my two cents of, pretty much no, with no issues, there hasn't been any issues, the nine months, ten months I've been there, up until just recently. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Oh, excuse me, excuse me, sir.
Mr. Gonzalez, I, I do got a question. I, I like the comment that you said, make it exempt, which is a great idea right now. So let's say your car overhangs the driveway, your Chevy and the Jeep, not a big deal. What happens when we start going, we have a party? Next car over the sidewalk, next car over the sidewalk in the driveway, in, in the yard, so on and so on. And we start seeing that, are those vehicles exempt?
That's a parking, um, you mean north to south, on top of?
Well, what, either way, let's say yours are exempt.
Yeah.
But you have a party and, you know, your party guests decide to park all over the sidewalk, would that be an exemption or not?
It wasn't, well, to be honest with you, that's what we use those big streets for. We, I tell my guests, go ahead and park on the side, you guys walk it up, you guys are guests. We live here, we have our parking.
And see, and I appreciate your honesty on that, but I'm looking forward, I'm looking five years.
Well, there, there's signs on there that state no, no parking in general, so.
But we also know, and if you're aware, there's hydrants are red, no parking, and what do we see?
Yeah, correct.
And, and so what I'm, I'm, I'm asking is, and, and the question I'm asking is, right now, you're okay. Let's say you are exempt, but somebody else moves, one of the residents moves out, somebody moves in, has a party. And you see these vehicles parked all over the street, all over the sidewalk, would that be an exemption or not?
Park along the sidewalk, no. I, I, I believe our community has been pretty tight knit to where there has been an issue and they brought it up to, and hey, no worries, because it, we, we try to get out. Does it, you know, that happened twice.
That's kind of what I'm looking at.
Correct.
And see those cars parked over sidewalks and stuff like that.
If you're talking about, you know, uh, was it a, a, a long, a long.
Whether you're parallel.
No, of course not, not that, I'm, I'm just talking about lawfully parking in our driveway and just leaving the two vehicles that are parked there alone.
Can I make a comment real quick?
Yes. Thank you.
I'm very, good question, Robert. I, I'm very happy to hear that you guys are all talking, because this is something that I wanted to bring up later. But I'm bringing it up at this point right now, because it sounds to me like you guys are really working together to police your neighborhood. Just on rules of how you need to, to address it, so I, I do appreciate that, sir.
That's good, thank you.
Um, real quick, Marty, go ahead and come on up.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez.
Good evening, uh, I'm just here to answer any questions you may have. Uh, as you said, I agree with this lady over here that, you know, this map was approved, um, by the applicant, which was Pacific Century Homes. And this goes back to the time when houses were about the price they were today. And most young people or people that couldn't afford needed a smaller home and an alternative to a big house. So if you recall, Pacific Century Homes built the cottages, which were really, uh, attached housing, similar to this, to make it affordable. Because in two thousand five, two thousand six, you had three hundred and fifty, four hundred thousand dollar houses, the average person would qualify. So in a sense, Pacific Century Home started with the big cities have been doing for a long time. As that was selling out, it's my understanding, Pacific Century. As that was selling out, it's my understanding Pacific Century has developed this one, which was even one step better than attached homes. You're not listening to your neighbor through a wall, it was detached housing, of course, as you know, they went belly up and went broke. It's it is a matter of choice, I mean, if you really look at it all, and of course, if somebody bought, you know, driving a duly, I shouldn't have bought a house there. Um but for compact cars and smaller families, you do have two car garage, you have two parking spaces out front. And there are plenty of places, in fact, I was in India looking at some property subdivisions built by D R Horton Public Companies. Do you realize that a lot of these subdivisions, they don't have streets and their walking area is in the street or they don't have streets to get back sidewalks? Um so it's not something abnormal, these have sidewalks, just not enough parking. But at the end of the day, it's a matter of choice, the streets were in probably when the people bought their homes. And if they do have a large family and they do have four cars, it's probably not the right subdivision for them, the reason they bought there. Is because they were able to when homes were selling for three hundred, three hundred fifty, three hundred seventy five thousand dollars, these homes started out being two hundred and thirty five thousand. It made it affordable for the families. And the good part is for people that have bought there early, I just bought three homes from the developer just as an investment. I paid three hundred thousand dollars for these same homes that they just paid two forty, so if that's not the perfect home. And their family's growing and they wanna drive big vehicles and duly's and trucks, then maybe they oughta look elsewhere, but it's gonna cost them more money and they can make a fifty thousand dollar bill by selling them. Um but there there's a purpose, you know, uh you know, condo is better than an apartment. But uh single family detached is better than a full size home and it's just a matter where you are in your life and your affordability, where you're gonna end up at. And I think there's sacrifices that go all along when you're, you know, they chose affordability over additional luxuries, bigger yards, more parking. But if you buy a town home and I think we may see that again in the future, parking and I own some multifamily, as you all know, here in your city. Um we guarantee one parking spot for the tenant in front of the unit that is shaded. And everything else is open game where they find our other guest parking that's not either labeled or reserved and their unit number. People expect that they were in an apartment, when you buy a house on a street with no off-street parking. Or off-property pro- parking, surely they all knew that. Um the good part is, is you have Second Street and you also have, I think it's Green Valley, I was part of that developing and taking it back to council for approval. There are some areas to park, and I think the other one is Second Street, you may have to park a few houses away or if you have a party or gathering or football, there are options. Um we did at my apartments, the Trescho Road, we worked with worked with I D. We ended up doing a parallel road using one of their easements, we did parallel parking on both sides with a single driveline like it's proposed here. And it's worked really, really well and it gave our tenants extra parking. Um but but best bang for the buck for two hundred thirty five thousand or two forty, two forty five, and of course, I'm sure they all bought at different times and they're up to three thousand. Or three hundred thousand now, probably not a bad deal. So the you know, that's kind of the way of the future, I mean, if you go into, what do they call it, uh you know, when you're you're doing. Inbills in the in the communities that are all built out in the big cities or even in India, they're called, what do they call it when you build, almost like your apartment complex here, right here in the city. There's sacrifices on on parking and luxuries. So I I I don't think it's a bad deal and they probably have to make work and there's alternatives on other streets. I was the developer. That bought that and reactivated that subdivision because we saw affordability as an issue for young families and and lower income families. And it uh you know, other than some parking inconvenience, I got the floor plans have been great, obviously, they've sold well. I sold Victoria Homes eighty nine lots, I built twenty two of them, which I still own to date, and now I think I've bought five more from Victoria. Uh and and we have no problem people standing in line to rent them, so it's not a bad project. You do have streets that you would experience in a planned unit development zone, is that what you call it, uh which are narrow, limited parking. But if you buy into it and understand it, then and you have equity that's built up, that's twenty or thirty percent from when you bought it. You know, you you do have options and it is a matter of choices like this lady said over here. So I don't know if you have any questions, but I was the original guy that kind of turned that subdivision around, there's no C F Ds. So people were able to buy without this huge C F D debt, Mayfield one and Mayfield two had humongous C F Ds, C F D debt, twenty, thirty thousand dollars. This particular one has no C F D debt, nobody's celebrating about that, which has about two hundred dollars a month to your pay house payment. Um so I think there's a lot of benefits, but there are a few negatives that go along with it. I'm here to answer your questions for you, um but we did the improvements, we knew what we were getting into, I think all the buyers. I just bought three houses, I think it's on Meadowbrook, I don't even know, Meadowbrook or Saddleback, I think it's Meadowbrook, the closest one to the retention basin. Um and there's a high demand for it because of the affordability. Right now, with today's interest rates, I'm building a subdivision of two hundred sixty homes in Brawley, with the interest rates where they are today. Uh our entry level house, which would have been two seventy five about a year ago, was up to three fifty because of supply chain lumber all issues a year. And with the interest rates up today, we got one of my buyers got a quote, their payment was gonna be twenty five hundred dollars a month. And how do you expect a young couple or an entry level family buying a home, and that's where these homes are a good fit? So then you're going, if I can't afford twenty five hundred to have a regular sized lot. A little more off-street parking, what am I gonna be is an apartment, so all these are as an eternity for a family to grow. Or families to downsize and we we've we've taken people in both areas in these lots and they've been pretty successful and I think they'll continue to be. But there are sacrifices, there's benefits, meaning lower mortgage payments, lower prices, they have gained equity, so they're not like a. Uh what do you want, white elephant, uh by all means and and. And I think there's other opportunities for people to make some money and move on to something bigger if there if there there things in their life have changed. Any questions? Sure, it's not a bad deal.
Hello, Esther Frias here, I am a disabled veteran and a single mom of two. And um my issue here is, I understand it's a good deal, I got a great rate. Um this is the only place I qualify, well, actually, I qualify in El Centro too, but I moved to Imperial cuz of the school district for my child. And um. When I walked through the model home, the parking lot was is twenty feet, so I assume. That my parking space would be twenty feet as well, I checked my contract, nowhere on my contract does it say that it's twenty feet or now it's fifteen feet. Um we did started noticing that our parking spaces were smaller when we started walking around the communities. And amongst our neighbors on Saddleback and Meadowbrook, we started commenting and we actually went and measured. And then few days later is when we got the notification of citation and that's when we started looking at the code and all that. So if I would have known, I know I made the purchase, but if I would have known it'd be an issue and that I'm gonna be cited, I would not have purchased there, I would have purchased in El Centro.
Was it an actual citation or was it a warning?
No, no, it was a it was a notice, but they had said that they were gonna start citing. So that's why we all decided to come over as a community before it, we started getting citing cited.
Right, right now, it's just a warning.
No, just because our our mayor um said that we weren't gonna get cited, so we haven't been cited since, which which we really appreciate, by the way.
Sorry, so I think uh the home, the price, the prices of the homes. And the interest rate is completely irrelevant to the topic that we're taking on our driveways. So we were actually told when we went to see the model homes myself, I'm speaking for myself and probably for a lot of us here. When we did the walkthrough of the model homes, we were told that the square footage is exactly as it is on the model home. The only thing that was going to change was the backyard, depending if you had a two, three or four bedroom home. So if you look at the model home on Spring Street, their driveways are perfect. Their trucks fit there, their SUVs fit there, but once you go to our homes is where we got shorted the five feet of our driveway. So I'm sorry, Mr. Coin, no no disrespect, but I think the price range. And um us getting a great deal is irrelevant cuz we're here to speak about the parking.
Wait, bring up the map again with the. I had just a quick point, um I'm not sure if it's been brought up by Mr. Mora to everyone else.
Spring Street.
On on those houses, there are, there should be property markers that extend to up the curb. Um I'm not sure if there's been a surveyor or anybody out there been able to to check that out, um. Every house has them right at the edge and they go all the way to curb, and if that was the case, that would mean that we actually are legally parked within our boundaries. Um yeah, there's a people, they're all along, I'm not sure if any surveyor, anybody's ever been taking that into account.
You shift the image so I can see Spring Street, is that on your, is that on the map?
That's gonna be uh south down.
Those marks you see are. Survey markers. These survey markers are all over the place, different areas.
Hi guys, um. Me and my fiance actually just moved into.
Uh state your name for the record, please.
Will William Reyes Junior.
Any address?
Uh twenty uh two eighteen Saddleback.
Thank you.
Uh the thing is that me and my fiance, we just moved into the uh area. We were offered good prices for our houses and stuff like that, but the thing is that that's not why we're here. And not only that, you know, we don't have the money, most of people here, especially with the economy right now with everything that's happening, we don't have the money. To be going and buying three homes here and there and investing, this is actually our home that we're trying to build a life in for right now. And the thing is that it just, it's a nuisance when we have people coming up to us and telling us that, hey. You can't park your car here, especially if we're trying to move our stuff in. I actually had my car cited because I had it on the driveway right there, sticking out. I was trying to move in boxes, a guy came over there and he's like, hey, you're gonna have to move your car more up, some of us have longer cars than others. We don't have cars that fits within the twenty feet parameter or fifteen feet. Fifteen feet. And on my contract, it doesn't show that I have fifteen, twenty feet like that, it just shows what we have right there and we do have markers that show where our house is. And the thing is that even for my fiance, she was saying the same thing, hey, I got a guy over here telling me I can't park my car up here. I can't move my stuff right here, most people have to like park their car maybe a block down on the other side of the road where there is no parking sign. Just so they can move a box to fifteen, thirty feet into their own house. And honestly, it's not right because we're supposed to, I don't know how to put this in a right way. That's our home, we paid for our home, we paid for our privacy, our lot, our stuff. And for people to come and tell us that we can't even be parking next to where we paid for, it's not right. I'm just asking that you guys actually listen to everybody that came here today and. Just listen to our problems at this point and agree to them that it's not right that we're over here and we only have this much space. Not only that, we're over here getting threatening for tickets and stuff like that, just to be in our own place that we paid for. This isn't like a town home, this isn't a regular home, this isn't like a big mansion, this is just our 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 own little piece of heaven that we paid for at this point. A lot of us have families, a lot of us don't need the bothering or the nuisance of people coming and threatening to either tow our cars. Or give us citations just to park where we paid for.
Appreciate it, sir.
Did you receive a citation? So they actually cited you?
Yes, because he came back a second time and he warned me the first time and I was just parked a little bit off my driveway. I was hanging off just a little bit and he said, that's a citation right there, so now my fiance has to go to the uh court and pay that.
Yeah, we need to get, can we get your information, sir? The first time you were unloading your truck?
I was unloading.
Well, you should be able to unload your car without being bothered.
Carlos Bolivar, and I do live on Saddleback. There was a remark that was made earlier that these plans were approved in two thousand four. And in two thousand four that there were no vehicles compared to what we have now. I used to have a two thou- a nineteen ninety nine Ford F two fifty, a Super Duty. Was twenty two foot long, it was a boat, that was a ninety nine. So there were vehicles already then. Somebody asked, well, what's the solution? What's the solution to the problem, the problem starts with. Who has complained? Have the residents complained? Have the residents on what's the streets, uh Saddleback or Meadowbrook? About the cars extending out over the driveways or the sidewalks? Or is it somebody giving out little pieces of paper telling you you can't park over the drive o- over the sidewalk?
There was a complaint filed, sir.
There was a complaint.
Yeah, a complaint.
A complaint, okay, one complaint over, how many houses, Mr. Coin, are are on those two streets? Eighty nine, small percentage. The solution could be. Personally, I I can't see putting up a red curb and parking on one side, can't see that. Your concern is what if, there's always gonna be a what if, you could make that four lanes. And there's always gonna be a what if, you wanna make sure that they slow down? Don't put a speed bump, but put what is called a speed hump, do them in the suburbs already. They do them in the suburbs, slow down the traffic, if there's a concern about the speed of the traffic, I don't see it. Granted, I'm at work most of the time, Saturdays and Sundays when I am home, I don't see, I don't see the speed, I don't, I don't, I I don't see it. I don't see it, I don't see the, I don't see the problem with the speeding on the traffic, definitely not on Saddleback. What happens on Second, different story, because you do have a much wider lane. You have a wider lane, you have the potential. Don't see it, I mean. It surprises me that there was was a complaint. Like, like he says, out of eighty nine. Small percentage. Speed humps. You wanted a solution, you wanted an answer, there's there's a there's a possibility. I'm surprised that the city hasn't. Come up with something like that, but as far as slowing down the one sided, one sided uh parking, who's first? Who's first, who's first, the lady that comes home at six o'clock in the evening, she's gonna wind up parking over by the fairgrounds. Being sarcastic, but I mean, it's it's the same thing. I mean. I don't, I mean, I I I may go to work tonight at ten o'clock, where am I gonna park, don't know, I'm by myself. I have three vehicles and I do have two in the garage. And Mr. Tucker, you saw my pickup sitting in the driveway. When I go to work tomorrow, that pickup will be parked over on Green Valley Road. Do I trust the people that are doing the new construction on the other houses, I have to. Because of this little piece of paper, don't park your truck over the sidewalk. You don't see many people walking up and down the street, I don't. But then again, I'm not home all the time. If somebody has seen people walking up and down the street, it's probably minimal. Is it a potential problem, anything is, anything is a potential problem, given the circumstances. Put in a speed humps, put in speed humps, two on each road, on each block. There you go.
The complaint wasn't speed.
Ah, is blocked driveways, you want people that you you want people to have access to walk and push their strollers around and walk their kids? Um how wide is the street, nineteen feet, twenty feet? Excuse me, twenty four, okay, twenty four feet, normal width of a car is ninety six inches, eight feet. Person walking on the right hand side, the car can and will veer around it because there's a speed hump right over there, I gotta slow down. Streets are very well lit, I give you credit for that. Streets are very well lit, a lot of the houses have their lights on at night. It's not dark over there. Two o'clock in the morning, when I sometimes come home, not from the bar. But uh at two o'clock in the morning, it's very well lit. But if I was married, would I want my wife to be walking up and down that street at two o'clock in the morning, no, no, I don't feel comfortable leaving my pickup over there. When I leave it on Green Valley Road, I don't. And now you wanna make parking over there? It's like I talked to Mr. Tucker earlier today. The driveways were designed in a certain way, and that's fine, that works, that works. For certain circumstances, and like I said earlier, in this Imperial Valley, I'm guessing that. Half of these people in here own a pickup. Maybe half of you do, maybe more. But you can't put your pickup in that driveway. Because it will stick out, I have seen cars that are hanging over onto the sidewalk. Cars, regular sedans. Was a solution.
I have a question for you, can you put your pickup in the garage?
No, no, cannot, I barely put my little SUV in there. My SUV is like the size of a, the Ford Edge, which is smaller than an Explorer. My other vehicle that I have in there is a motorcycle. And I, and I too have junk in there. I too have stuff in, in, in my garage. Do I wanna pay for storage? No. So I weasel my motorcycle in there.
When you say the car is hanging over um into the sidewalk, that's with the garage door closed and the car all the way up to?
Fine, all the way up. You wanna touching, you wanna touching, or you wanna be able to walk around a car?
Be able to probably walk in front of the car?
No, you can't do it.
Okay.
Safely, you can't do it. You cannot. I'm a good, I, I consider myself a good driver. I don't know how good of a driver she is and I don't care. It's her, it's her garage door. She wanna redesign it, that's fine. But um then you wind up getting into a different situation. Well, you have to park your car in the garage, in the driveway. Oh, okay. Here we go. Now, now comes that issue. And, but you gotta get it up as close as you can. And you gotta do this at ten o'clock at night after coming home from the theater. Or dinner at Applebee's and you hit the bar. And the garage door. They're not cheap. I've never bought one, but I know they're not cheap. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's true. Yes, I live on Meadowbrook Drive and um P D N and I live together, two single moms. That's why we got the four-bedroom. We figure we'd help each other. Um, so it works great with, with this exception. Um, she has a a pilot. So sh- when we got the notice, she actually parked it on the side where the street was suggested because we were worried that we would get cited. And I have a, a a Yaris and a, I think it's an Accent. No. I can't even think. It's my son's car. Anyways, it's a mid-sized car and I actually scraped my car because I, I guess I'm not a good driver. It was at night and I tried to scoot it up as much as I could, so I scraped it. And um, my son was obviously mad. Anyways, I scooted back and it was maybe a foot and a half that still would go over what my fifteen-foot uh driveway would, is and would go into the walkway. So even with a smaller car, it still would cover like a foot at least. So it would, it, you know, it just sucks to get cited for, for that foot. And I mean, people can actually, a lot of us actually on Meadowbrook Drive, we have kids and we walk at night like at seven or eight with our kids and we easily walk around it. And there's some room to walk on the walkway. But like they said, we're very good neighbors and very considerate that, I mean, we all walk on the street and if we see cars coming, our kids holler, car coming. They're very careful. We get on the sidewalk or the car stops and we go around. We really work well together. So anyways, just another comment I wanted to make.
Thank you.
Sorry, uh, just one more thing to add. Uh, I know you guys are probably thinking we could just leave our garage door open a little bit, park in, probably halfway. Well, the thing, the thing is that the spaces inside the garage, they're probably equipped to probably handle car models, probably twenty-ten and under because they're a lot shorter. I have three cars. I have a truck, I have a new Malibu and I also have a uh Nissan Altima. Now, these cars, I have to put foam just right there, just so I don't hit the wall of the garage. And then parking it up, I can't even leave like a little bit open just to keep it up because there's a whole bunch of bugs. There's grasshoppers, there's crickets, inchworms. It's just infested everywhere with that. We have them coming in from the drains. We have them all like that, so we can't even leave our garage doors open just a little bit, just to even make it that way. Even the day that the guy gave me the warning for being parked halfway down, I told him I can't leave the garage door open and park it up there because he suggested that. I'm like, there's literally, you just pick up one rock, there's like fifty, sixty just crickets right underneath. And every day is just trying to get them in, get them out, get them in, get them out. So that's just another thing I was gonna tell you guys. Thank you.
I'd like to ask a question for everybody. And what I'm going to ask, in no way am I saying that this is going to happen. I just wanna get an idea from you because we're all trying to find a solution for this. You have no problems with your vehicles walking around them on a sidewalk? Oh, yeah, yeah.
Put it out because I think they have a few children that live there. They actually put it out and like they said, I'm gonna reiterate them. We've all been very mindful. You don't see anyone speeding down Saddlebrook or Meadowbrook. And when that sign is out, I live on Meadowbrook. It's right at the corner and they put it in the middle of the street. We make sure to even slow down to ten miles per hour. You see a child there, you stop, make sure that there's no one there and we go. So we have no issue going over the driveways or going, walking around the park because we've all been considerate of it.
Okay, what, what we're trying to do is we're trying to get a consensus on all this so we can try to fix this. So this is the reason why we're all here. So everything we're trying to do is find a solution and we're gonna do it as quickly as we can. There's a lot of things though that come into play. There's legalities. California laws have some things that we even have our hands tied on. So we're trying to find the right solutions. So please take this, that, that what we're doing is finding the best way we can fix this and, and with as little pain as possible. So.
Right now, the waving of the citations is a temporary solution. What we want is something permanent.
Sure, and that's what.
We want something permanent that's not gonna try to switch when there's new city council members. Because we need to consider that because we live there. That's our home. I don't plan on leaving my home nearby.
No, I, I appreciate that. And I think the council does too.
So we do want it to, we wanna make sure that when there's a new city council members, that it's not gonna change.
You're saying that is a walking off, is that? No, as long as I'm here through December, I'll, I'll. But, um, but anyway, uh, to another topic. I apologize. I came a few minutes late, but it's not like.
Everybody knows what they purchased there. The issue is citations. You know, and compliance. So it seems like to me if you instill some tolerance levels for that subdivision, you put a speed limit at fifteen miles an hour, maybe put signs up on each corner that says residence only, so they're kinda communing within themselves, so they have no problem. You know, you, they're, they're policing themselves. They feel comfortable walking the streets if somebody's car is in the sidewalk. That would probably be a comfortable start to make everybody feel a little bit more of a community. Um, and maybe eliminate any cars that stop driving around or speeding down. That might be an option. Um, but after hearing everybody, yeah, it's all about citations and warnings and not complying. Uh, it's a unique situation, but they all were able to buy a house and afford it. And there's some challenges on it and it sounds like if the city's willing to work with them. I think hopefully mission will be accomplished for everybody can uh get through and be happy. But, but yeah. Speed limit, residence only, you see some of those signs in smaller communities. Uh, infill, I guess is the word I was looking for earlier. They build a lot of these small communities called infills trying to move out some of the old blight in these cities in the downtown areas. I think you guys have done a couple like that here, but but uh, yeah, it works. Everybody works together and safety is obviously an issue, so. That would be my recommendation. Fifteen miles an hour, residence only. You know, if they need speed bumps beyond that, but if it's only residents driving the street, no, I'm not gonna speed. You know, I think they'll all respect themselves. But the homes themselves are rock solid. I think the area is good and, and uh hopefully everybody can work it out. Thanks.
Yes, sir. Signs, signs are great until you don't read them. It's like, it's like everybody up here, they're not all the same. The community within this, this community within the community of Imperial is trying real hard by itself to police itself. Is trying real hard. If, if we get the little papers that says don't do it, okay, we won't do it. So, but now there's, now there's, we'll call it a moratorium, uh, uh, we're suppressing it, we're suppressing the, the citations. Okay, well, now, now I don't have to put my truck on Green Valley, on Green Valley Road or whatever it is. But at the same time, that doesn't give me the right to go speeding up and down the road because these little kids are still walking around.
Absolutely.
And so if we continue to police ourselves, number one, we're gonna save you the money of having to put up the signs. If we continue to do things the way we are currently doing them, which is policing ourselves, which is watching out for each other, which is doing the best we can to make it our little area. Residence only, that one I, that one I can see. That one I can see. Until the developer that's putting up the new houses now is gonna tell their workers, oh, yeah, what do we do now?
Yeah.
What, what are they supposed to do? Because they are on the north side, on the southwest side, they're, they're, they're there. And it's just, it's just part of the it's just, it's just part of the game that we have to play in the mornings, getting in and out of there. It's, it, it's just part of it. Uh, we're slowing down and doing what we're supposed to be doing amongst ourselves is something that I think we can handle. Provided, like she said, city council doesn't change come January. And then every, and then everything just goes out the door and then the papers start up again. And then the citations start.
Let me ask you a question. How many of you folks lived in Imperial your whole life or been here for a while? Are you all basically out of debt? One, sir? Fifteen years? I've been in Imperial most of my life and I'm gonna tell you how old I am. You guys are awesome. This is Imperial. This is what I was when I was a kid. We all policed ourselves. That's one of the things we talked about today is if you folks policed your neighborhood out there and worked to, to, as a solution to fix this, we're gonna work this out faster. And I really appreciate seeing that tonight because this is, this is neat. I wish the whole town would see this. Because you guys really show what Imperial is all about. So. Mr. Omprom.
Got a question for Ms. Valle, Mr. Oliver and Ms. Frias. Um, do you guys have an HOA? Is this a HOA neighborhood? No, okay, great. Um. HOA, Homeowners Association, Homeowners Association. Um, so I, I like what you said, police yourself, you know, um, police the neighborhood. Now, what happens when that one neighbor comes home two o'clock in the morning and says, I'm gonna park wherever I'm gonna park? What's the salute? Okay, it's in, but.
My neighbor's neighbor, I will shoot him.
So, so again, what I'm trying to avoid is, let's say that person does come over. Two o'clock in the morning because like you said, it was at Applebee's or whatever it was. And now there's a confrontation, confrontation. That's what we're not looking for. So when we police, policing ourselves works until we get to that situation because then it becomes an incident, which we don't want. So, couple things I like. And if you know me, I like those speed humps. It was up to me, if I had a budget, I'd put them down every neighborhood and slow people down because of those kids right there. That's one of my things that I like. But like Mayor Dale says, we're gonna find a solution. One way or another, we're gonna find something.
On the sidewalks or on the streets, we're just asking to park in our driveway, like knocking, like let's park in our driveway and my vehicle's gonna go over.
It's, that's kind of what. Yeah, and that's kind of what I'm looking for is when you police something, let's say it doesn't work with that neighbor's neighbor. What's the solution to that? Do you come to us and say, all right, get them?
You're a smart thing. You, first, you, we are fortunate, we here in this room are fortunate that this has not turned into a conference table. There you go. That's number one. Number two is when it doesn't work and said neighbor or said person in that particular car at two o'clock in the morning is being very hard-headed and, and the mixed drinks are talking, and you know what? That's fine. I'll talk to you tomorrow when you sober up. And if it gets out of hand, fortunately, they've invented these things. That they dial nine-one-one real fast. Mister Officer, you need to come down.
And that's kind of this. What I was looking for. And I was just using your examples that you, you were giving us.
You don't allow, we as homeowners, we don't or we shouldn't allow that situation to get out of hand and put ourselves in harm's way. You walk away and you deal with it when uh, when everybody is more level-headed.
I, I appreciate that.
Also, um, not to say that nobody here drinks, but.
No, just using the example.
Yeah, usually, um, everybody is probably down at home by ten o'clock. You don't really hear anybody out by then anymore but the dogs. That's it. It's a pretty calm, quiet community and a lot of us have cameras that actually detect. So, you know, our vehicle's already parked, so if another vehicle passes, it detects. And we usually text each other if we see or we'll talk to each other, hey, did you see that truck there? Or, you know, like wondering who it is because we're, we pretty much know whose vehicle, who. So, I don't think that.
Not only that, the streets are so narrow, you can't park on the side. There's just, it's, it's not possible. You're gonna be going around just trying to, like they said, sometimes two cars going down the same way can be an issue.
Actually, when they were still building, sorry. Actually, when they were still building the houses, finishing the houses in front of my street, which was their houses, oh, uh, a worker parked right in front of it. And uh, when I was coming out, it wasn't there, but it pulled back and I, as I was pulling back, I hit it a bit. So that did become an issue because he's like, hey, you hit my truck. I'm like, hey, there's a sign there that you're not supposed to park there. So anyways.
No, and, and that's all of a sudden, of course, is I like the speed bump, the speed hump solution and policing the neighborhood. I, I definitely like that because policing neighborhoods does work. So. Thank you, guys.
In addition to the policing the red, the, the neighborhoods, I like the idea of the residence only posting because it's.
It's really easy, it's not necessarily easy, but it's easier to police yourselves, but when you start.
Introducing non-residents in, that's when it gets a little more difficult to police. So a residence only posting, I think, would would help in the policing if that's the route we decide to go.
Well, if you wanna do the residence only, wouldn't you put it up on Second to Spring?
Mm-hmm, thank you. Yes.
If we put it up on.
But how residence only is only there to Second and Spine Street. Well, we have to want to have our family over. They can't come over to our home and be personal because it's only residence.
That's just the parking, that's not, who could be there, but who can take over the parking?
You could, you could put it as residence only parking, you know.
But, but parking where? First, there's no parking. Have, have, uh, my question, sorry. Has, have any of you members uh driven the area?
Yeah.
Yeah. And you guys, you guys have seen the, the narrow streets, right? You guys don't see any street parking. Have any of you driven our area during trash day?
No.
No.
You cannot, you can barely drive through the street during trash day. So, I mean, no one will park on the street, only on the side streets. So that's why if you put residence only, if I have a guest, where can I park my guests?
It would get, whenever I'm talking residence only, we're talking, one of the things that it was brought up is, okay, let us block the sidewalk. We'll walk around.
We, we, you know, we, we're real careful. We'll walk around. And then there, you're saying, well, we police ourselves. We all know we have to drive slow. Well, people that are not from that area don't know that. And you, that's when you're gonna get the, the faster people that who aren't paying attention. That's why I'm saying make it where it's residence only so that only your community is going in and out of there. That, that, the people that know there. That way you don't get those people speeding through when you're trying to walk around a driveway.
And which it is already because there's no exit. There's no, there's no exit on the other side. So you don't live there, you have no business driving in that area because you won't be able to exit any other way but going back to Second Street.
I agree. A lot of people who might be driving here are looking for something, may not know that. And then that's when you wind up with strangers driving down your street that don't know.
Wait, sir.
Hello, my name is Gustavo Pantoca. I live back on Saddleback. I've been there since August last year. And when I moved in, when I went to the walking through, I remember the guy was, guy in me, he told me, hey, your trash, trash can is not gonna fit through the through the hallway. But he didn't tell me my car is not gonna fit on my driveway. So I was the last person moved to Saddleback Drive on the south side. And I spoke with somebody, with my neighbor on the no, uh, south side, north, and north side, and they told me, oh, it's a very calm street. Everything is easy here. It's a nice, nice uh, community. So I, I keep going with my. So, I, I keep going with my, my, getting my first, my first thumb. So, why you guys wait for when all the houses were sold to start the cit- citations?
Because we got the complaint. We had a complaint.
If somebody has a complaint, why is not here, try to defend his-
I don't know.
We can't answer that, yeah.
I think, uh, I don't wanna say the city, but, uh, they try, try to be in the safe way if s- uh, an accident happened. Because nobody's, was, they didn't notice that the driveway, it wasn't long in, long, long, big enough for the cars. So, if an accident happened, it's gonna see, hey, why, why these driveways are too short? And nobody notices?
Well, I do have a friend who lives on Saddleback and I visit her quite often, and I do park in her driveway. And I don't block the sidewalk, so I think the issue is that some vehicles, like long trucks, don't fit in the sidewalk. That's on a new law. You've never been able to block a sidewalk, so if you have a bigger vehicle, I don't see the tremendous issue in just parking it in the appropriate place that isn't a danger to your neighbors.
Yeah, but like, like you guys say, uh, you guys can par- make one side to park the cars and the other wa- the other side, no parking space, right? So, if somebody, if I park in my front neighbor's house where he or she used to park, it's gonna be a complaint, because I chose his park side, right?
No, it's, uh, street parking's a public parking, even though it's-
Yeah, but somebody doesn't know.
So, somebody can come front, in front of my house, somebody can come park their car there no matter what, and it's not my-
Yeah, but no other people are nice, like, like you guys or like us.
It's the law. It's, street parking's free, it's anybody's-
Yeah, but somebody thinks is, they, they own the space, because in, is in front of their house.
I, I think what he's trying to come to is that there will be issues because of the parking, because a lot of people will say, well, you're parking in front of my house. That's my property, you're parking in front of my house, which issues do arise because of street parking. You guys are fortunate enough to have street parking, we aren't, and I think that's what he's trying to come to. And in regards to the parking of the driveway, uh, I, my friend's, uh, son come over to my home, and he drives a little Ford Fiesta, and you guys know how small those are, right? His vehicle was still about two inches on the driveway, and he was kissing my garage door. My husband had parked his work van, and he hit the wall of the house just to get as close as he could. So, uh, in regards to the blocking of the sidewalk, it's not like we're doing it purposely. It just happens, because no matter what type of vehicle you are, it's a little bit on the sidewalk, which is on our driveway. It's not like we're parking on the sidewalks, on the sides of the streets, we're parking it-
Excuse me, just a second. Let's, let's keep it to up here, folks.
Because I can't hear when everybody else is talking, so go ahead and finish. What's your, is that it? Okay. Um. Obviously, we, we understand what, what the, what the, what the problem is. I mean, we've heard it tonight. We've come up with some good ideas. Um, again, we're gonna try to come up with a solution to fix this. And I believe that's what we're doing here tonight, so is there anyone else that would like to comment? Because if not, then we'll, go ahead, sir.
An issue about having someone to walk, correct?
Excuse me, the ish, the issue for, uh, the complaint that came in, it was, uh, to have access to walk?
Yes. So, why don't you just make a walking lane on one side of the street? Have public workers come and put a line, that's the walking lane, and leave that free for people that wanna walk up and down the street?
Okay, Othong?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that way leave it free for people to commute up and down, they'd like to.
Like a bike lane?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, it's very calm and quiet. I don't think there'd be any issue with any other person in this room that would have a problem with that. People walking up and down that line.
That's a very good idea.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Sure.
Um, so I think one of the biggest reasons we all wanted to come tonight was to say, because right now the sidewalk is designated as a designated sidewalk. And so, when you guys do park and it does hang out into it, that is against the law. So, not just our code enforcement can come cite you, any police officer or CHP can do the same thing. And so, we just wanted to make sure, you know, that the ideas that we came up with, that you guys are okay. Because say we come in and make a solution, and we did do the one-way street, you guys are like, hey, that, you know, that sucks, you guys didn't really help us. That way we know what ideas, you know, you guys like and are, you know, are comfortable with. And so, the one thing we do have to look through, though, is there are ADA requirements. So, if, you know, for the handicap people and the wheelchairs, we do have to have a walking lane for them. Um, and so, that's kind of one of the things that we're working with, somebody that specializes in that, to make sure that it is okay and lawful for all of us. Because there is ramifications for breaking that, but thank you all for coming tonight. Um, I hope that you guys understand where we're coming from. I think I definitely, I hear your guys' frustration and hope that we can make a solution based on, you know, the feedback you guys have given us tonight.
I'm, uh, I'm with you all. I would be in the same situation you are, so understand that we're gonna exhaust every thing we can do to make this right, so just give us that time and we'll come up with a solution, I promise you. So.
I am doing my best to work around everyone.
That's, I don't know.
No?
No, it's, it's- And, and I mean, you know-
Is that yes or no?
I, it technically, I'm the, the lawyer who is not trying to talk, but the problem is, if you have somebody with wheels-
wheelchair who's standing out there, they call nine-one-one and say, I can't get around it. I cannot promise you without a doubt that there won't be, so I don't think you're gonna have issues with the city. I don't think anyone's out there policing right now. I don't think anyone's out there writing citations. Everyone out, um, directed by our mayor is working with warnings, um, only if an issue comes up. In an emergency situation, I cannot promise you that that won't happen. So, a blanket no, just from a legal standpoint, is an impossibility. But I think, based on the last meeting and this meeting, the city is doing warnings. And the city, if you get a citation, call us right away, let us know. But I cannot promise you, it's a California vehicle code that in, in the worst-case scenario, you may not get a ticket. But I, I hope you can understand that we can't do that. A blanket no is just not a legal possibility. But go ahead, Jeff.
I gave you my cell phone number. You've got it. So, remember that.
To add something. I did, uh, I did some research and I did read upon if the how, if the county ordinance states are, uh, driveway supposed to be twenty feet long, nine feet wide, and were fifteen feet, where do those five extra feet go and not another, another feet? Are we, if it's not up to the code, are we gonna have issues if we try to sell our home, how Mr. Coin suggested for us to sell our home? Because they have to be up to date.
In fact, I would like Othong to explain how that is correct and it was, it's a good, so-
So, what, what we did, it's not, it's not, we do not follow Imperial County, um, ordinance. We follow the City of Imperial ordinance. In this case, we did, it's a plant unit development, which provides more flexibility to the homes. So, the front yard setbacks, uh, it's just for approved plants, it's not the night, it's not the typical, uh, as the residential single-family, which is twenty feet. This is a plant unit development, a different land use. Um, so that, it, that's the big difference. So, in, when you have a planning development, the, you know, setbacks could be three feet, could be five, ten, uh, it, it's a little bit different.
Hundred and twenty-five feet in depth, far as then it was, so how did that-
For, yes, single, single family residential. Um, it's a plant unit development, so you have different zones. And-
These houses are exception. That's the only one-
So, does the code apply to us then?
That, that's what it was called, it's a plant-
So, so then why do, so then why do the halls on Sprint Street have the twenty feet driveway?
They're the same model?
They're the same models, and we were told that's exactly what we were getting.
So, is that an issue with them?
That's true. That's what we were told. We were told that everything was gonna be exactly the same, the square footage. The only thing that was gonna change was our backyard, depending on how many bedrooms of the, of home you, you purchased. So, why do they have the twenty feet and we have the fifteen?
Um, uh, that, I think that's a question for the developer, but you, you're in the planning development and the development status we've seen, uh, what it was, it was fifteen. You can go twenty, twenty-five if you want to, but you can go up to fifteen, uh, the-
So, then they liked us, right? Then, I just thought that something that, they showed us something that we were gonna purchase, I would purchase something.
May, may I ask if you asked how long your driveway would be when you purchase your home?
That's something you don't think about when you're purchasing a home.
Well, I'm just, uh, speaking in response to the fact that she said that she had liked you. If she asked how long her driveway was, and they told her it was gonna be twenty feet and it's fifteen, and that's a specific line, but if you didn't ask-
Or being told, though, it's gonna be exactly how the model home is. And you go out there and imagine the model home, it's twenty feet driveway. So, we're basing it off the model home. We're not thinking, oh, let me ask him, is my car gonna fit in the driveway, how long my driveway is? We're not thinking that's an issue for our home, if we're being told, this is what you're getting, the only thing that's gonna change is the driveway. That's the only thing they, they mentioned to us when we did go and see the model homes and sat down with one of the girl. So, we're not good, I mean, who thinks about asking how, how long this driveway is when you're purchasing a home?
Or be like asking, are these, I mean, we do ask for the counters, but I, I did have that issue, which I asked for stainless steel, I mean, what's supposedly in my contract, and then they give that, but, you know, like she said, I, when they said, this is what it looks like, this is the square footage, that's what you go by, you're not, are you sure that it's gonna be a little bit shorter or not?
Okay. Any other comments?
Okay. Where your complaint would be, if it was represented like that? And you have doc- documents, like the, uh, negotiators or whatever, that would represent that this is what you're going to get? This happened and has happened, I know in San Diego and the different developments of the condos. The owners ended up suing the developers. Ended up so, suing the bel- uh, the builders. And they didn't get what was represented, but there were other concessions made as far as, uh, improvements. But to come to the city, you cannot do that. That is the B, if that was represented to you and you have documentation, and, and sometimes when people say you're gonna get the same thing as what you're looking at, what are, what am I looking at? My house? Structure? Or am I getting the same size as a lot that the, um, that the walkthrough, you know, the, uh, house as an example? Or it, or, you know, it's interpretation.
No, so I did, I did specifically ask, what do you mean by the same? And, uh, um, they told us, the lot sizes are the same, the only thing that changes is the background. Or if you have a corner lot, you get extra square footage outside, because you're on the corner. But we were told all lot, all lot sizes are the same. Because it was told by them.
So, the spec house, you measure the lot and see how that compares to your lot. Okay, or you step back also.
So, uh, Councilmember O'Pron and I recently did explore, uh, these Victoria house, uh, these Victoria homes, the model homes, uh, or in contrast to the lots that you have, and the lot sizes are the same size, and so I guess the question would be, um, if you were offered an extra five feet, let's say five feet were taken off your backyard or five feet were, uh, was taken from your driveway, which one, would you rather have a tinier backyard? Or would you rather have a large driveway? I would meditate, you can't change it.
I would actually say I would add the five feet to my driveway, because in the weather that we have in the valley, I'm not, it's not like I have a side lot. I would prefer the driveway over the backyard, to be honest, especially if we're gonna have this issue. Yeah.
We just working on the parking right now. That's nothing to do with us.
Exactly.
Yeah, but it's-
Yeah, you guys, you're getting way up.
Yep. Okay, again, uh, any other comments? Seeing none, um, we're gonna go ahead and close the meeting. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Um, City Council Commissioners, um, tomorrow is the planning commissioner's meeting. That will be here-
Dealing with more of this. And if the City Council would like to join us, they're welcome, if they wish. They're invited to attend, join us tomorrow at six-thirty.
Yeah, we just, from, just so the, the audience members know, because we didn't notice it as a joint meeting, the planning commissioners can be up here and they can only watch in the back, and only two of them typically. So, if they are not here tomorrow, it's not because of them, it's just because of a Brown Act issue. So, I apologize in advance, um, that we could have, we didn't notice it. Yeah, they can, they, you can wa- or watch on video.
Yeah, we can watch on video.
Yeah.
That's fine. I, I, I strongly invite all of you to come back tomorrow. Um, and, and we can do this some more. And maybe some more ideas, because we need ideas. We aired our feelings about, you know, what we, what's bad. Now, we all know that, now we need to start figuring out some solutions that are gonna be okay. None of them are gonna be great. So, think about that and come back tomorrow, and maybe we can come back with, uh, something we can put down and maybe work with. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good person. I, I, I would just say, though, though, that don't feel like you have to come and repeat what you said. We, we heard you loud and clear. Uh, and, and, and I, I frankly, a- and one of the things, one of the solutions that we've considered aside uh, is exactly what you're talking about. Because when you cut away, one-way, parking only on one side, parking at the end of the street, residents only, that doesn't directly address what, what you're talking about. And that is the issue with having a car that's too long to fit a fifteen-foot driveway. So, one of, one of the issues we're looking at, and by the way, I would just add a footnote. Nothing's as easy as it seems. It seems pretty easy to go, we, we can go and get a sign that says residents only. And if that's all we do, now somebody complains, well, that person's not a resident. And then the person that we're gonna, are we gonna, we don't have an ordinance, all we have is a sign, right? So, then there's the whole, that whole process. The idea of the sidewalk and allowing you to, to park on it, the, 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 what we're looking at is, of course, the legal issues associated with ADA and all of that. But if we were to abandon, abandon it, uh, on the surface, that seems like a pretty straightforward solution. Uh, but we wanna make sure about potential for unintended, we all hear about unintended consequences of, of, of that situation. I haven't heard in all of our internal discussions a concern about speed. So, uh, the, the, the concern about people walking in the street has less to do with speed than it has to do with inattention. We all see people that might be driving well within the speed limit, but they're looking at their cell phone when they're driving. And so, the, I think that's the, the, frankly, for me, speed is less of a concern in that neighborhood because of the width of the street than, than inattention. And, and, um, I, you know, I see kids here, we all, I think many of us have kids, um, uh, and, uh, we, we don't wanna see something bad happen. Uh, so, I think the idea, assuming for the sake of the discussion, that an abandonment is a way to, to, uh, address you being able to park in your, in your driveway. It, we, I, I think it would be not responsible of us if we didn't address, okay, now was, where is the pedestrian traffic gonna go? And so, I think the idea of maybe a pedestrian walk is something that we would need to look at in that context. But in any case, you're, you're more than welcome to attend, it's a public meeting. Uh, uh, but I, I, I don't think there's anybody here that can't say that they, they understand the issue. Uh, and, uh, and so, uh, uh, you're not obligated to come and, and repeat yourself. If you should have an epiphany overnight in terms of something new, feel, feel free, uh, if you should have a, an epiphany at other, at any time. Uh, because it's, it's frankly gonna take a while uh, uh, to, to go through these steps, whether it's an abandonment a- a- and any, uh, solution like that. And I would just say, with respect to enforcement, I think as Councilperson Bernworth pointed out, um, we were there because of a complaint. I had been told there hadn't been any citations. I heard differently tonight, so we're gonna look into that. Um, the, the effort, uh, my philosophy as city manager, whether it was all of the restrictions that were placed on us during COVID, or whether it has to do with this, is that, is, is that I want people enforcing the laws to be essentially teachers. There, I think a big part of the job is, is to educate folks a- and, uh, to inform them. There, I think a big part of the job is, is to educate folks and, and uh, to inform them. I, I think, I think we've all been educated now about what our standard typically is and how it evolved to be fifteen feet. And now fifteen feet just doesn't work. So I, 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 and I, and at this juncture, I don't think any of you need any. More educating about what our standard is. Nevertheless, though, that is gonna be the focus of our effort. Uh, so I, I, uh, should you receive, I, 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 I would anticipate that you, that. Even the courtesy notices, which I was aware of, uh, uh. Would be surprised. Cause it's a matter of people code, state law. Particularly no other agents. Be surprised, I don't think CHP has too much interest in driving down our, our residential streets, but you never know. And, and, and if indeed somebody did complain to us and didn't, isn't getting the sense that we're, we're doing what they believe should be done. I don't know, let's see if we would do a pick-up if they get. Thank, thank you all for attending and, and. Say again, you heard you have cleared, so uh, I, we're open to any sort of solution.
Thank you all for attending.
Good night.